Thank you. June the 26th, call to order. The invocation will be by Kay Horner, Awakening America Ministries. Pledge of allegiance will be given by Commissioner Daniel Beatty. Please stand.
Well, Father God, as we come into your presence this evening, first, we say that we are grateful for those that you have called and chosen, set apart to be servants in this community. Thank you for Mayor Davis and each of our commissioners. Thank you, Lord, for the time and energies they invest in making our community a better place to live, recognizing and understanding that it's not just what we see here in front of us or in the media, but it's the many hours that they serve behind the scenes and the energies that they invest. We thank you, Lord, that they are impacting the broader spectrum of this community, this county, from the young children in the schools to the veterans, Lord, in their senior years. We thank you for all that you have done in and through them. We pray that you would bless them and bless them indeed, that you would grant them wisdom and insight and understanding, that you would allow them to serve, Lord, unselfishly, with their motivations only to please you and to honor and serve those that you have appointed them to serve. So, we thank you for this meeting tonight and all that will be accomplished. We pray you would speak peace into every situation. I don't know what's on the agenda, but you do. And we pray, oh, Lord, that you would give a sense of unity and purpose and that everything that is accomplished would not only serve this community, but give glory and honor to you. In the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome the Director of Schools, Dr. Cash, and also Chamber of Commerce Doug Berry. And your boss normally slips in later, and I'll try not to overlook him tonight. Uh, thank you both for attending. The, uh, next thing on the agenda is a report from the county mayor. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Daniel, take one of these, pass around. Two more things coming around for you in just a minute. While those are coming around, the septic tank report, the first group of, uh, septic, uh, repair jobs. We had eighty-nine contracts. Fifty-three of those have been completed. And the second group that we're doing in-house, we had eighteen signed contracts. Three weeks ago, that program began. Eighteen were signed in about eight days, and two of those have been completed and are going through the check process this week. You have your latest new books, the final version of the budget that has been handed out to you this evening. And you also have four resolutions. You have two of the appropriations resolutions, one for the general fund and one for the charitable organizations. And you have two tax rate resolutions. I was telling Danny Men to go. These resolutions are the same as that book, just in resolution form. And I would respectfully ask that those four resolutions be put on the agenda for next week.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. Mayor, we talked about the order. We're going to do the, uh, yeah, appropriations resolution first, then the countywide tax rate, then the fire tax rate, and then last, the, uh, nonprofit resolution.
That's true. And for the record, there's no change in the tax rate.
Yeah, there's no change. Oh, continue resolution or not needed enough?
No, uh, we're not gonna do that. We'll have one handy in case something happens next week. I'm a little superstitious, but other than that, no, no continuing resolution.
You as finance chairman, you want to be the one that puts them on the agenda? Chairman Blake of the Finance Committee put them on the agenda. Go ahead, Mayor. Go ahead.
Uh, that's all I have. I was looking over it, make sure those four resolutions, the new books, unless anyone has a question, I believe that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We'll next go to our reports from committees and our districts. We'll start on our left. Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have, uh, two little things. I went to the ribbon cutting of the veterans' home. I'm so finally proud to get this veterans' home, uh, opened. A hundred and eight beds. Uh, many years, uh, they've been working on this in, uh, many different commissions. Uh, Mark Hall, of course, uh, was a big advocate for that. So, we need to remember those folks that did push and help with this, uh, on the previous commissions. But, uh, it's, it's, uh, time that that comes to fruition and, uh, get these veterans a place that they can call home. And, um, other than that, the sixth district is doing well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, three or four things tonight, so bear with me. Um, the road committee met, uh, a few weeks ago. Mr. Chairman, the road committee met a few weeks ago and voted unanimously to recommend accepting the road superintendent's recommendation to approve Hardwick Way. It is twelve-hundred-and-forty-five feet of asphalt that begins at Urban Road and ends at a cul-de-sac near the First Baptist property. Place this recommendation on the July third, twenty-twenty-three voting session agenda.
Good.
Also, the T-Dot litter grant, the monthly report, three-hundred-and-forty-three county road miles, one-hundred-and-thirty-five state roads, sixty city road miles, for a total of seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty pounds of litter and three-hundred-and-twenty-five pounds of recycled materials. As always, thanks to Missy Harrison and Thomas Bell that worked closely with me on... There's no way I could ever possibly get any of this done without these folks. Um, also, I've had several calls from constituents about broadband, uh, Pell Road, Carter Road, Samples Chapel. And I'd like to ask Lori and maybe Adam, too, if we could maybe... I know July's gonna be, we're getting the budget and stuff done next week, but maybe in August, September, somewhere, we can let some of our constituents invite some folks in, uh, Volunteer Electric or some of these folks and see where we're at on, on getting broadband in those areas. And that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to recognize Dr. Cash to talk about a couple personnel changes with the county schools.
Um, so, thank you, and just excited to tell you that Waterville Elementary's new principal is Jeff Paulson. He's a twenty-five-year veteran educator and, uh, started in the classroom, instructional coach, assistant principal and principal for the last six years at Thrasher Elementary in Hamilton County, another blue-ribbon school. So, we're excited to have him at Waterville Elementary. Uh, Dr. Heather Hayes is moving to the central office as the special ed coordinator. Ms. Ruth Ann White is retiring and, uh, but will hang on for a little while. It took a little bit of begging, but, uh, needed her to stay with us just to guide us through. And then for our Oak Grove Elementary, we are excited to announce, uh, Mr. Adam Ferguson, and he's the new principal at Oak Grove. He served in different capacities in Bradley County schools. In his last role, was dean of students in the Humanities Academy at Walker Valley High School. He comes to us with more than twelve years of experience just in Bradley County alone, and we are excited to have him, uh, to have Mr. Paul- Paulson and Heather Hayes all switching and moving. So, we've been in the interview process for quite some time. So, great leaders. I love for you to meet them. I'll get them here so that, uh, you know, that you will see them and know them, but you will be pleased with the work that's gonna be done in the schools. So, greatly appreciate your support and look forward to seeing them. Can I answer any questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, that's great, Ms. Cash. Just one quick question. Could you give us an update on the, uh, Hall of Fame or whatever y'all are trying to do, your committee or so forth?
I, I can do the best that I can if you will give me a minute. The Hall of Fame met, uh, for Bradley Central High School. A lot of, uh, great people represented there covering the decades, and they have come up with, uh, procedures and some policies in effect to begin recognizing, uh, the great work that's been done over the years at Bradley Central High School. And I believe, Mr. Alford, were you on that team as well? No? Well, I missed that. Uh, uh, want me to fix it or you wanna stay out? Um, but their, their intent is to look back and, and the successes that have come out of Bradley Central High School is to begin that Hall of Fame work to recognize them. And I think that's a very positive mood for the school system and for Bradley Central High School. So, um, I, uh, look forward to, I believe there's a, a press release. I'm not sure if it's, uh, came out today. Did it come out today?
It did.
Um, so, we're excited about that work and looking forward to celebrating all the successes that have come out of Bradley Central High School in Bradley County. So, thank you. You're welcome. Any other? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Goins is absent. Commissioner Thompson?
Oh, well, forward.
All right. Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Yes, I went to the, to the veterans' ribbon cutting. You're talking about one elaborate place now. Them, whoever done the building on that note, what they was doing is so pretty. Went to Food City's ribbon cutting, Highway sixty. Whoever's the commissioners over there was at First District, you'll be getting a, probably the biggest store around in a food city, and it's gonna be really nice. And, uh, I reckon that's all for me.
Great. Commissioner Winters, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, glad to hear that Randall Ferguson, leadership leader in our... Uh, the, I was unable to go to the veterans' program. But I saw it on TV. I do want to go in, uh, fellow commissioner, acknowledging Mark Hall for all the work that he did with, Mark said, with. But in each meeting, stand up for him. He's proud. That building makes us all proud. It started in two thousand and three. Didn't get funded till two thousand and eighteen. That's a, it's a great gift. That's a very strong... There were several others. Mark, Mark has worked with me in the seventh district. I know his heart. Needed him on this commission very hard to make, make sure that appointed. I would, I would funding. But through the work of state and the veterans, heroes and all their work, veterans of this town that stood up this commission, really proud day.
Thank, thank you very much. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, also on the third.
Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just real quickly echo all the comments on the veterans' home. Before I came on the commission, I was, uh, I saw a lot of the work done on that. Just FYI on that, the HCI committee also awarded quite a bit of funding, uh, with respects to the veterans' home, um, over the years, um, with the grading and stuff like that. So, uh, I hate that I missed it. I had to take a business trip that couldn't be avoided, but, uh, congratulations to all those who involved, and I appreciate all everyone's effort on that. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, Second District doing well. I did go up by, uh, Charleston's, uh, basketball courts and stuff the other day on the HCI funds that they're using, and looks like they've made some progress. They moved some dirt around. Looks like they've got some stripes on the courts now and so forth. So, maybe one of these days, they'll have that thing open. Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing.
Commissioner Beatty.
Everything's doing pretty well in the first district, but I wanted to bring up a thing about the cannery out there. Out there at the cannery, we, uh, we got the time changed from, uh, the Saturday, Tuesday till, I mean, Tuesday to Saturday, eight to two. But the problem is that there at the cannery, they've cut the people out coming from Polk County and other surrounding counties. They've always done it. They've always done it. But I think they ought to continue serving them. And furthermore, the cannery used to be open from six to two. Now, it's eight to two and everything. But I think extension's here, and they might have something safe. It'd be all right right now.
Go ahead, sir.
So, for those who do not know me, my name is Hannah Goodson, County Director of UT TSU Extension in Bradley County. And this is Kevin Tredway. He is the Family Consumer Science Agent for Bradley County. So, we kinda oversee the operations of the cannery. Um, for many, many years, Ms. Mary Lou was our cannery manager. When she fell ill last summer, we kinda had to kick it into survival mode. All the agents in the office came together, took turns, took days. Our office hours were eight to five, so we did an eight-to-two kinda shift. Um, I was on leave at the time, so this is under the Justin Thomas interim reign. Uh, when I came back, we kinda kept with the flow of the Monday through Friday, eight to two. We had it in set. It was the middle of the season. We kept it going. Um, happy to change the hours from Tuesday through Saturday. I know Saturdays were an operating day in the past, and we're happy to do that. Uh, we currently have another cannery manager there that works eight to two. He's happy to shift Tuesday through Saturday. Um, we received a lot of compliments and positive feedback from the appointments. Um, instead of just having people come on a free-wheel kinda base, we really had a lot of good feedback from the appointment. So, we have a lot of Bradley County residents that fill up that calendar. Um, when we were noticing that we were having phone calls from Polk, Hamilton, Georgia, and even West Tennessee, we were like, okay, we need to serve Bradley County. This is a Bradley County taxpayer building. We wanna serve our residents first. Um, so, that's when that brought that up. Um, and we, that's our whole focus. As UT Extension, we serve Bradley County. Um, the cannery is for Bradley County residents. If that's gonna be a county-owned, you know, building, then we just felt like that was, that was the right thing to do at the time. Um, our schedule's already pretty filled up, I think. Um, it, there's constantly people calling to make appointments. Um, so, and that's just Bradley County residents at this time. Um, another point on that, we are not set up to take in money for this. So, that kinda plays into the, if we were to charge outside counties to come in and use the cannery, we're actually not set up to take in money. So, that's not an option for us either. Um, so, to compromise from the six to, or the five to one hours, we shifted from Tuesday to Saturday, eight to two P.M. Just to clarify why we changed some things recently.
How many people do you take in per day?
Yeah. So, um, per day, it varies. So, it depends on our admin is the one that does the scheduling. And so, what she will ask when people call is she'll ask what they're canning and how much of it they have. Uh, from there, we do some math, uh, to figure out what amount is gonna be in the canners and what amount of canners we'll have free, and then the scheduling is based upon that.
Approximately how many people?
Approximately per day, um, I would say anywhere from four to eight per day. Um, I have the total numbers from last year here. And so, last year in two thousand and twenty-two, there was a total of one-hundred-and-forty-five different people. That doesn't mean one-hundred-and-forty-five appointments because people can make multiple appointments. Uh, there was a total of ten-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-five jars canned and nine-hundred-and-forty-nine...
How many did you say? I didn't hear you. How many?
Uh, the jars was ten-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-five.
Okay.
Um, the ears of corn that were steamed and then individuals husked them there and then freeze them at their homes was nine-hundred-and-forty-nine. If, um, that, if those, that amount of jars was to be purchased at, let's say, a grocery store, um, that cost to purchase would be around thirteen-thousand-nine-hundred-ten dollars and forty cents. Um, the cost to county residents to preserve at the cannery, so to purchase jars, produce, ingredients, was around three-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. So, that brought out an estimated total cost savings to county residents of ten-thousand-four-hundred-thirty-two dollars and eighty cents for last year's numbers.
We must picked up a lot more Bradley County people 'cause we used to do Polk County. And, you know, it's a few others from other counties. Never did have no other problem. Getting them all done, getting them all done.
I think what, what has shifted here was our appointment scheduling. Um, we, we rolled back a little bit on the amount of appointments just out of safety concerns.
How, how far ahead do they make appointment, say?
How does, how far? Um, pretty much whenever they know what they're going to be canning and how much of it, um, they can call and make an appointment.
How, how they gonna know where they gonna have that stuff by then? Are there produce by then?
Right.
If they have to buy it or produce it, they don't really know.
Right. So, typically, um, we, we can go by a good estimate, um, a best guess. We have some additional jars, lids, ingredients at the cannery. If they have more than they are intend, than they intentionally believe that they will have, um, that we can help provide. But we typically ask for customers to bring their own jars and ingredients.
Well, uh, do you, do you get everybody done in Bradley County? Needs be done?
We, we are...
Pretty well, pretty well.
Yes. Yeah, we are, we are full of, uh, of Bradley County residents. And so, that's the...
I mean, you had to leave any of them out or, or, you know?
We, for the most part, have never had to, to leave anybody out. At the end of the canning season last year, um, the last three weeks got booked up and, and we did. Um, but that was the, the end of the canning season. So, for the most part, we're, we're full, uh, from just Bradley County residents.
If you started at six o'clock in the morning, you might be able to handle other peoples.
That's, that's a fair point. The issue with starting at six o'clock is having a, a cannery manager who's able to, uh, make those hours work. And so, in terms of having extension personnel, um, that could, that could do that as well and, and be on call. We do a lot of, uh, programs.
I know they ain't Bradley County residents, but they spend ninety, probably ninety-nine percent of their money in Bradley County, grocery stores and everything. I mean, no more than we have. I don't see it be a problem. We've done it for years and everything. It's just my opinion. Really, it didn't cost them Bradley County really nothing but what a little electricity is all. And we spend a lot of other money on ball lights and everything else.
Uh, Commissioner...
So, I don't see no problem. I mean, I don't, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I don't see what'd be the problem starting six to two and cover them people.
Commissioner Thompson first, and then Commissioner Hughes. And then it's the mayor's domain, so we're gonna allow the mayor who runs this operation to have a comment.
Uh, what he said there about Polk County, huh? When did we quit taking Polk County? We took them in last year, didn't we?
We did not.
Did not take any Polk County's in last year?
If, we might have scheduled Polk County residents, um, not knowing that they were Polk County residents, but if we were aware, then we did not schedule them.
Okay. Okay, so, you're, you're filled up for this year? Are you looked up?
Well, no, because the, the appointments happen on a rolling basis. And so, as green beans come to harvest, tomatoes, apples in the fall, those appointments will then fill up closer to the, that time.
Okay. What were you talking about? Electricity and all this? What, what did you say? Are they charging them for electricity or what? Are they, are they getting any charges at all? Okay.
No, there's no charge for Bradley County residents to use. I think what he was saying is if we opened up earlier, it would cost us obviously a little more electricity, which a little is, uh, is pretty big.
Central seasons here, though, I agree with him, it should be. And, uh, if you wanna do, uh, do right with the citizens and people that grow this stuff and wanna can, a lot of people don't wanna can nowadays, but if they do, then we need it open for them. And I think that hour would make a lot of difference.
Commissioner Hughes.
Ms. Cotton, I have a quick question for you. One, I've been on your committee for several years at this point, and I've heard nothing but great things about the cannery at this point. Um, I have heard some bad stuff in the past, but since you've started your schedule, I've not heard any complaints about it. Most people have been extremely happy about it, in fact. But the question I have is something simple. Is there a UT extension in Polk County?
Yes. Every county in the state of Tennessee has a UT extension office.
Is there a cannery in Polk County?
Uh, you would have to call that county, um, not that I know of. No, we're the only county in the state of Tennessee that has a county-owned operated cannery. Now, there are public canneries there. Now, you, they charge for you to go use that cannery.
So, they have access to a cannery?
But we are the one-of-a-kind, the only one in the state.
The other question I have is, this is something that Polk County... I mean, we've paid for the building. We, our taxpayers pay for all of it. And I, quite honestly, if we had room, I wouldn't have an issue with somebody from Polk County coming in. I really wouldn't. But I, I am a true believer that we should take care of our own first and then move from there. Uh, is there a reason that Polk County doesn't put money in to have a cannery themselves?
You would have to call their county director and ask them. No, I do not know that answer off the top of my head. They could if they wanted to. They could get with their county government. Sure, absolutely. Any county could. I've had other county directors come to me and ask me questions about the cannery. So, it's, it's a topic of conversation within other counties, and they know we're the only one. So, I get a lot of phone calls or, or visits, um, with that as the subject line. But, uh, we, like I said, we're the only one.
And the only other fear I have with this is if we open it up to one county, we're gonna have to open it up to the entire state, basically.
Yeah, like the West Tennessee call we got last year.
If we're prepared to put more money into it than what we're putting into it, then...
And my other, my other issue is if we are gonna allow other counties and we're gonna charge them, I don't really know a way of to handle the money. We're not set up to take in a cash flow like that. Um, my other issue with the hours is we would have to find a cannery manager 'cause right now, he's agreed to Tuesday through Saturday, eight to two. And that, that was already kinda going to there and talk to him about Tuesday through Saturday. So, I don't know if right now I could just switch the hours to six to two, or six to two. Um, us as agents, I can't depend on agents to be there at eight. We do a lot of evening, night, afternoon, weekend, time away from the office. I can't schedule out every agent to be there at six A.M. So, that would be the other issue, I would say. We'd have to hire somebody for that.
And I guess the question I'd have is if we were charging Polk County people enough to cover that person, because that's how it'd have to work, how much would we have to charge each one of them? And at which point would it be just cheaper for them to pay for it for themselves in Polk County?
Right. You'd have to see how many are coming in and utilizing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor Davis, it's, it's in your domain, sir. Could you have some words of guidance?
Not really. Um, we have grown in recent years, as you well know. The popularity has grown. Uh, and bottom line is, without adding more utility costs, without adding more staff, we're, the way we're set up now takes care of Bradley County people, and that's our priority. We're not a regional cannery, and these other counties are welcome to build their own. It's the bottom line. I mean, we, we're doing appointments, and someone maybe couldn't get an appointment, and they noticed somebody with an out-of-town, out-of-county car sitting there in the parking lot, so they complained. So, it had to be addressed, and I think it's addressed appropriately. We're taking care of Bradley County citizens. It was a project that's being paid for with Bradley County taxpayers. That's our priority, and it's working good. Um, sorry for Polk County or Matt Moon County, but they can address that at their commission meetings.
Commissioner Beatty, and then Thompson.
Uh, we got Murray Lou, the one who used to run the cannery. Let's let her come up and say a few words.
Okay. I was, I was at cannery for seven years. I am the one that started the Saturday thing, so I did that on my own. And as far as getting there at, for six o'clock, five o'clock, there's gonna be very few people that's gonna get it four o'clock and go down there and do that. I loved that place, and I did. I got up and went down there for six o'clock, and I spoiled people rotten. So, they all expect somebody like me to be down there to pet them, I guess. And the reason I did Polk County, and it was okay with them at the time, the only reason I did Polk County, they all kept saying, well, we buy everything we buy from Bradley County, but we pay taxes that way. And I actually went to Polk County at one of their commission meetings and tried to get them a cannery over there. And the only thing was, same as you all, that they couldn't afford it. They just, when they had a building and they had people willing to work there, but they said they just couldn't afford the expenses of it. In my opinion, there's no expenses compared to what they get out of that. I mean, I think it's community service rather than a, a business. And that's why I tried to get over to them was, this is a community service. And there's so many people there that just cannot afford living nowadays, and they were so grateful to get to come. But I do understand it is just for Bradley County, and I, you know, I didn't, I took a few to Bradley, uh, Polk County from this, but of course, now I wouldn't because they asked not to take anything out of Bradley County. But I just felt sorry for... But I just felt sorry for some of the people that was coming in there. They're raising grandchildren and great grandchildren. And they couldn't afford to go out and buy meat and stuff like we do. So I just helped them any way I could, but, and that, that, I've spoiled them rotten. But I'm not going to do it anymore. And now I'm not able, I can't go back anymore to do it, or I'd be down there right now if I could, if I could, but I had a stroke last year. I can't hardly talk. That's one of the things. And I don't have the energy I had at that time, so I can't go back. Or I'd definitely go back and hip them. Any questions? Um, what you call them, mother hen, I think.
Just a couple of comments and questions, uh.
Okay.
And maybe one of y'all could answer too. I know in the past, they've been people that bring in like fifty pounds of pinto beans and they'll tie up your cannery for a long time. Then they turn around and take them to a farmer, I mean, a yard sale somewhere and sell them. Uh, how, what do y'all, how do y'all control the amount people bring in?
Well, my canners, all six of the canners will hold hundred and eight, hundred and eight quarts. And for ninety minutes, and if you tie forty pounds of pinto beans, will fill up all six of those canners for ninety minutes. So, you know, that cuts down the number of appointments you can have. And if they, if they can more than, what was one of those canners? I know they brought more than forty pounds. And then I, you know, talked to them, you don't bring more than forty pounds. But forty pounds is the limit.
We, like Mary Lou just said, forty pounds takes up the entire, all the canners that are at the cannery. And so we have, uh, begun to implement a twenty pound dry bean limit, um, on, on cannery appointments. Now, to answer your question in terms of, um, people who might can at the cannery and then turn around and sell those jars. Um, we make it clear and we have something that they sign as well when they're filling out how many jars. Um, that jars that are canned at the cannery are not for sale or to be made for sale. And, and we try to, to educate as many people as we can on that. Um, but obviously some, some people might just still go ahead.
Take advantage of the situation, that's the bottom line. But the other, I know that it happens and, and, uh, I guess, have y'all thought about, if you cut it to twenty, and if you had twenty pounds, what kind of timeframe you looking at then?
So, yeah, so you're still looking at the ninety pounds, um, just for, but that's for three canners. And so we would still have another three canners that would be open for another individual that wanted to can at that time as well.
Mr. Thompson. Is anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Beatty, steal your floor, sir.
And another thing I want to bring up, uh, like on that after the farmer's market, a lot of the people come from, uh, Polk County, Heserville, and some from Oodawal, I know this. And they buy a lot of stuff on Dayton Mountain. It's sold out there. I mean, I don't, them people from Polk County, I don't, if they want to can something, I don't see why they couldn't can something. They're selling their merchandise out there and everything. Cause ain't that much coming from Bradley County produce.
We have four that sells at the farmer's market that I know is from Polk County. We have one that's from Matt Min County. And a lot of people go to Dayton Mountain and bring stuff down there to sell, especially apples and, uh, sunpins and green beans. They just made us, all the, they just sell just at the farmer's market. It does come from Dayton Mountain.
I don't, I just don't see why we can't, it ain't going to cost a little electricity to let them Polk County bring it and move it to six to two. I don't see why we can't do that. You got, I might order bring this up. You got ball players that go to Bradley at Lils and Oodawal, but they put a Bradley County address down. I know it's for a fact. And that ain't right. We're paying there. We're paying the school them. That ain't right either. If it, if it ain't right for Polk County to come out there, that shouldn't be right. One of them played ball for Bradley last year, Oodawal. He lives in Oodawal, but he used a buddy's, somebody that knows, address.
You want to place it on the agenda? And if you do, let's get the wording down so we can get it on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't place it on there. I want to put it six to two and, uh, allow, uh, others, others come in.
So that, what you're implying then, you can't just discriminate and allow only Polk County, we're open, wide open. And that's what you're implying, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is that, did the produce have to be grown in Bradley County before they can can out there?
Not that I know of, no.
That's probably what he's getting out there. You know, if you buy fruit out of Florida or whatever and bring it out there and can it by.
I mean, there's produce brought from Florida up there that they sell as canned at the cannery too, you know?
Commissioner Bleak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, since we're now going to vote on this, I think this work session, we need to ask a few more questions. Um, one of them, I guess, if we do six to here in the dynamics of what they were saying with employment, can you guys, I know I put you on the spot, but what would be the increasing cost in your budget on the expense side in order to do six to? Cause I'm assuming you're going to have to, uh.
We would have to sit down and redo. Yeah, that would be, cause I've planned it this year for how it's set. So now that we've already started the canning season, that would have to be revisited. If we're going to add on two more hours, he's currently fourteen. So we would have to just make sure we have enough in that line.
Let me make sure I ask the right question here. You would have to hire a new employee.
More than likely. Post conversation with him I had this past Friday, my guess is that we would have to hire somebody completely new. Yes.
The second part is your current budget that we're getting ready to adopt, and you're part of our budget. I think it's fund one twenty-eight. One by member, which I should never do. You don't currently have budget for another employee.
Not for adding on two more hours to each day. No, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
On, uh, you said, how much do you pay? You must reduce your budget because Mary Lou, you know, worked from six to two. Unless you're paying your employees more.
Good question. I increase, um, his pay, uh, just to be a little more competitive with the world right now. Um, and that's how, and then our cleaning crew, cleaning man and our farmer, our farmer's market manager also had a slight increase. So to make it fair for both, that's why I kept the same number, but I'm not, yeah, does that make sense? Yep, yep. I increased just to, to make them a little more happy.
Commissioner Gilbert.
So what you're saying is you'll have to hire somebody else two hours a day, which is ten hours a week, right?
Yes, sir.
And if you pay them twen- ten dollars, fifteen dollars an hour, then that'd be times ten, right?
Yes, sir.
Let's get the wording. If we're going to put this for a vote, let's get the wording down pat. So everyone, everyone knows what we're going to be voting on. And you're proposing six o'clock in the morning till two o'clock? Two o'clock? What else were you proposing? That we open it up to all the surrounding counties? Now, is that?
For the cannery.
For the cannery. Is that the, that's, that's the way we want it worded, right? You got that, Lori?
We're good. Thank you.
Alright, steal your floor, sir. Is that it? Okay. We'll next go to the agenda items. Uh, agenda item A is Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a resolution, uh, to send, um, this resolution to the governor and to the state legislators. Crystal drew this resolution up. Uh, all this resolution does is oppose the red flag laws. Uh, that, uh, those red flag laws would infringe upon the Second Amendment and Fifth Amendment rights of the citizens of Bradley County. And I propose that we send this resolution, um, to the governor's office to where the citizens, uh, rights, Second Amendment rights to bear arms and Fifth Amendment rights, uh, is not infringed upon. And, um, I have a constituents here that, uh, wants to make a presentation uh, about this resolution that we want to send to the governor's office. Dan.
How's everybody doing? Um, we've prepared packets about, because there's some information in here and I don't want anyone to think that there's, it would be a lack of transparency. So all of the information in here, you'll be, I'll give you a packet of information that tells you what the sourcing is for all of them. I'm also going to, anyone who, anyone who's in the audience who wants a packet, I'll, we'll provide those also. Um, this is just so you can source some of the, uh, of what's being said. And, uh, so I think it's, um, it's a lot easier sometimes if you just have a source to go to. I'd also like to commend, um, Crystal Freiber, who did an excellent job of, on this resolution. And, uh, I think it's, uh, very compelling and it, uh, and it clearly sets a mark for, for what, uh, what we should be doing to try to, you know, preserve, preserve our constitutional rights, which is what the government's supposed to do. But sometimes that doesn't seem to be, uh, what we have going on. Okay, this starts out with the, first thing is, you know, there seems to be some controversy on the definition of what a red flag law is. Um, this is the definition according to the, uh, the legal team at the US, United States Concealed Carry Association. There's a red flag law allows individuals to petition to court to issue a protective order requiring the respondent to immediately relinquish all firearms and ammunition and give law enforcement the authority to seize firearms from people who are deemed by the judge to be a danger to themselves and others. Uh, this is clearly a violation of your Fifth Amendment rights and your right to due process. You know, uh, and this is a little bit, this is somewhat alarming that, you know, um, the governor's perspective on a red flag law. And this is from an article that came out of the Tennessee and, in which, uh, John Rich, uh, said he was, they were raising concerns over Governor Bill Lee pushing for a special session to pass his red flag law. Uh, singer and conservative patriot John stated, in somewhat of a twist, on June first, twenty twenty-three, the Tennessee, Tennessean noted that Lee wants a red flag law, but he doesn't want the words red flag used in conjunction. He wants to do something like California did with its red flag law, calling it an extreme risk protective order or something similar. Interesting you want to change the terms, terminology. Um, when this all came about, we'd done some research and talked to some people, including mental health professionals. Uh, and I had a letter that was sent to, to us from, uh, Rachel Hatchett, who's a licensed clinical social worker. And her take on this is that stigmat- stigmatization is a serious concern in treating mental health issues. It is common already for people to avoid acknowledging that they need help dealing with mental health issues out of fear of whethers may think of them or them being seen themselves as weak. There's the possibility of being deprived of a constitutional right as a result of seeking help is simply going to drive people away from the mental health treatment that they need. Further, it will also prevent people from u- utilizing medication to treat medical health issues out of fears that the medication will be on a list of government officials created by government officials with no regard to the fact that these medications have been proven to be safe and effective in improving the lives of millions of Americans who struggle with mental health issues. Um, and, and the reason of that concern is because, uh, some of the red flag laws that are being proposed, including the governor's, which was first put forward in April, um, is, uh, if you take these medications, if you take these prescriptions, you must sign away your, uh, basically you sign away your, your constitutional right. And some of these, uh, some of these are pretty common medications that a lot of, there's a lot of folks on it. Paxil, Prozac, Dolof, you know, Wellbutrin, Lexapro. And, uh, you know, so these are very common medications. And the fact that, that, you know, we show, uh, that we have all this concern for our first reactionary people and also our military and our veterans, and yet most veterans that are on some type of medication are on these. And so that would require that they sign away their right to have a firearm. So that should be extremely concerning, you know, uh, when you take into account that he's also requesting that they change the name of red flag to it, to, uh, to something a little bit less, uh, foreboding. Uh, I guess some of the harms of, of, of an order of protection or a red flag law, however you want to deem this or term this. Uh, it stigmatizes law abiding citizens who choose to seek mental health care, terse people who need to seek mental health care from doing so. Targets veterans and first responders who take these medications in order to perform their professional duties and live productive lives, unjustly revoking their constitutional rights. It also violates the Second Amendment of the US Constitution, which guarantees the right of people to keep and bear arms. And, uh, and this applies to not only state, but local and, and the federal government. It violates the Fifth Amendment because such laws potentially deprive law abiding citizens of their right to self-defense. And it violates due process doctrine by potentially depriving a citizen of property and self-defense based on presumptions, accusations, or, uh, prediction of, of some future behavior. Uh, unfairly punishing and infringe without a criminal conviction, the right of citizens to keep and bear arms. You know, and it's, it's interesting, why would we, why would anyone do this? Why, you know, these, these laws have never been shown to be effective. In fact, this law would have no effect on what happened, uh, you know, in Nashville. And, uh, you know, why would the govern- governor do this? Why would he not first release the manifesto of the murderer who took the lives of innocent people, including children? That's their story. That's what they told us. If we were to believe the event as we were told, why have they not released this document? Why has it not been released? Could it be that if they did release it, it would clearly show that this legislation would have done nothing to prevent these murderous acts? What are they hiding? Also, why would anyone put our veterans and law enforcement at risk? Most vets, vets suffering PTSD and many of our law enforcement officers are using these medications to live their lives and take care of their families and protect our community. For the government to bring forward legislation that is both unconstitutional and ineffective is disgusting. So, you know, I guess the goal here would be that if this resolution is passed, is that this would be passed on to, to our local representatives to, when this session is called, for them to say, the people in Bradley County are against this. We cannot, we have no way and will we not, uh, vote to approve any law that, that is under the auspices of this? So that is the goal here and also to send it to the governor, you know, and, and, uh, and the state attorney general and say, look, these are unconstitutional, but they're also opposed by the people in the communities, you know, and these are the, we're, they work for us and the people in this community are against these things. And once people understand what this is and also why you, why do you want to hide the name? That's deception. That's less intrusive. So I, I, that, that's, that's our stand and, and we would like y'all to read it. If you have any questions or anything, we try to put everything in the packet, but thanks for your time.
Very much. Everybody got any comments? Mr. Sleater.
Lori, will you send us the presentation that was shown? Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gilbert?
Dan, where do you find, uh, Dan, where do you find, uh, the governor's, the, you call it his resolution on the red flag law?
Well, the, the, there was a presentation made by two senators with a bill that had come through the governor that was April the fifth or sixth of this year. That is the tentative, uh, template for what he is proposing. There has, let's understand something. He has not yet exactly absolutely called this. He has indicated that he may, but I think if there's enough opposition, I think that they may not actually call this session. But that was, I can get you that information. It was in the, uh, in the Tennessee Conservative, uh, that information. Some of that, I, in that packet, if you'll look in there, we've underlined, we have highlighted a lot of stuff, and it, and it may be included in there in some of that information.
So what this is, is a resolution to let him know where we stand.
Exactly. That's what we're doing. Of course, you know, we all know he doesn't have the rule of law. There's nothing there. But basically, it's what I, it's telling our representatives, when you go there, this is a big no.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone? Thank you very much. Uh, next item, communication from the audience.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Uh, on that resolution, if I may, I wanna put that resolution on the voting session for July the third, please.
Done.
Also wanna make one more comment, if I may, on this resolution. McMinn County, uh, Republican Party has a resolution, uh, about, about this, uh, red flag gun laws, and Bradley County Republican Party also has a resolution similar to our resolution that we wanna put in. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's on the voting agenda. Next item, communication from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Yes, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to take a minute. My, a lot of, most of y'all may not know, but back about probably six weeks ago, my wife had a seizure, uh, at work, and, uh, the, um, the Bradley County EMTs that came to her work, did a wonderful job. And, uh, it wasn't really, see, I mean, it was serious at the time, but it, it, um, um, it was an electrolyte imbalance that had happened, you know, and so, um, but, you know, they, um, she, she has, she's claustrophobic. So when they went to shut the doors to the ambulance, she said, ah, better not do that, you know, cause this will get ugly. So I actually took her to the hospital. They followed us to the hospital, and we were there not ten minutes, and she had the seizure. And they actually stayed for twenty or thirty minutes, and, uh, I... I don't have words to thank them for that, because they did a great job.
Mr. Chairman? We have a, we have a great EMT organization, that's for sure. Commissioner Ledford?
Hey, Dan, what, uh, what hospital did they take them to, her to? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I understand the sentiments of this resolution, possible resolution. I think everybody knows the reason for its basis. But back to what he shared with us, I get the drift. Most of the news articles that I read, that I see where these violent acts take place, it's an age group, and I don't know these statistics, but I'd say they're below forty-five, fifty years and down. Did this go into, uh, law process? Our veterans, police officers, anybody who carries a weapon, the majority of those are above that. If I, if, my assumptions are pretty cl- I think they are pretty close. And, uh, if they do have need of these medications, and they see this threat of, you're gonna have that, that taking place, yet the violence may still continue. Not making that great of a dent on it. That's my only concern is if go forth, I'm not sure they would hit the mark. I know God bless, idea is a good one. Basis of it may not be.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Alright, the next meeting will be the voting session, Monday, July the third at twelve PM. And here at the courthouse, upcoming events, county offices will be closed July the fourth in observance of Independence Day. Friday festival, June the thirtieth at seven PM, First Street Square. I think this is the last opportunity for that one, the final performance. We are adjourned. Thank you.